I could give my Charles Tisch's associates card. But that's got to run in.
Okay, we have six items under your business this evening. And we request that we have those led by title only if that's okay with you. Okay? Let's start with item A.
Mr. President, before you get to that. Before you get to that. I would like to have some discussion about the potential to remove item D from the agenda this evening, just to allow members of council to have some additional discussion with regard to that before we move forward on that item.
I definitely support that.
Rest of you?
I don't disagree with that, but we've had extensive discussion as far as I'm concerned, both in the budget and just conversation amongst us. Again, if that's what council wants, that's fine with me, but I don't know what else there is to say.
I don't mind looking forward to night till it's night of the day. What's your idea? Up to you. Rest of you, what do you think?
I would, I'd like to hold off on it. I think we can hold off on it.
Okay. All right, we'll leave the motion to remove that from the agenda this evening. You want to make that? Chuck?
I'll make them.
I'll second.
Okay. Clerk, please call and roll.
Mr. Braggish?
Yes?
Mr. Cozart?
No.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
No.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay, that is removed. All right, so now, item A and B and C are okay, then item D will be the resolution, and E would be the motion. Okay? Okay. That's it. Any other revisions to the agenda as?
Are you going to assign?
No, I'm not going to assign anybody tonight, too. Item, item A, Chuck, you would do that?
I'd be glad to.
Don, you want to do B?
Sure.
John, you want to do C?
Sure.
Mayor, you want to do D?
Happy to.
And Chuck, you want to do E?
Sure.
Okay, if anything else you want to make, anything?
Yeah, Mr. President, after council comments, I think we should add in a motion to go into executive session.
Okay, go ahead, and too also, and you can discuss that when I come up with that. Okay, thank you. All right, one second. Make a note of that right now, too also. Anything else? Any changes to the agenda as written and as we've changed it this evening? Okay? Let's all stand and play.
(inaudible) of the United States of America. In his withdrawal of the voice of his parents, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With a clerk, please call and roll.
Mr. Braggish?
Yes?
Mr. Cozart?
Here.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Here. Okay, next item is the minutes. Now, you received the minutes this evening. We have a little bit of a problem with the, our recorder malfunctioned last time, so I think I recommend that we wait till the next meeting and approve those minutes. What's your feeling of that tonight? Or you want to read them tonight before the meeting here and then approve them? How do you feel about that?
I've read mine. Yeah, well, they're abbreviated, obviously.
And they're not going to change. You're going to have them abbreviated.
Yeah, and the motions are the motions, and so I would approve it this evening.
Okay. You want to move forward with them? Okay. Mr. Tisch, if you'll give it to us.
That's fine.
All right, then I will move that they are, it's been approved and on record as written this evening. Under Communications, let's start with Mr. Tisch.
I have no communications.
Okay, Mr. Tisch, thank you. Mr. Braggish?
I have none.
Mr. Morbe?
Seems like I had something, but I totally forgot.
Well, you should be asked like that. Thank you very much. Mayor, how about you?
I have nothing other than to comment that as Councilman Morbe gets older, this will be over.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wheel, have you come in?
I mean, I'm sorry. He gets his. Couple of items. I received a notice from Camp Hill Rotary and Civic Day Committee, the announcement of the annual Civic Day in Camp Hill will take place on Friday, May 2nd, followed by luncheon at 12:00 noon at St. Michael's Church Hall. And I'll put that information as well in the memo. I'll need to hear back from you whether you'll be participating on that particular day or not. Also, received an announcement from Congressman Bill Johnson's office. He's hosting a Women in Energy Summit on Monday, April 28th, from 9:00 to 12:00 a.m. at the Joyce Brooks Center. This is located at the Mahone County Career Technical Center. Received correspondence from Sunoco Logistics. That's the company that we have an easement across the Red Gate property. And they have given me a notice that they're going to commence with the installation of a new gas line. They'll be starting the survey work in March, which I assume they've already gotten started on that then. Request from Abaker, which is American bikers, American bikers aimed towards education, asking the city to support May as being motorcycle awareness month, and I prepared a motion in that fashion. And lastly, the results I received from ODOT, the results from the letting of the Camp Hill Signal Project. Bids were received on March 27th, and they'll be setting up a pre-construction, and once that meeting is established, I'll be able to get a start date, so that project's moving forward. And that's all I have at this point.
Mr. Waino, thank you very much. All right, let's go under Reports of Committees and City Managers. Mr. Tisch?
I have no report.
No report, thank you. Mr. Braggish?
No report?
No reports, Mr. Braggish. Mr. Morbe?
Just at the fire district, the website's a work in progress, and it's totally being reworked, and there's a lot of good information on there, and more to come, so check it out. And if you have any comments or want anything added or deleted or whatever, let us know. We'll continue to make that a good site.
Thank you, Mr. Morbe. Mr. Waino? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mayor. That's probably, I can't miss you, Mayor, I tell you that, that's a mistake there. Go ahead.
I thought my job was eliminated.
I know, well, we came to this for you, Mayor. Go ahead, you're up.
Because of only a few days in the past, I do not have the court numbers yet. I will have them at the next council meeting. So you could have skipped me because I have none.
Okay, well, that's okay, Mayor. Thank you very much. Mr. Wheel?
Okay, we have a number of items, five items of legislation to deal with this evening. The first being the request to participate in the state of Ohio's State Purchase Program for sodium chloride, or road salt. As I mentioned previously, there's two bids this year, the first being for a summer storage of salt, and then a second bid that would take you through the winter months. What we've done is decided to order 500 ton, which would put us, fill our salt bin during the summer months to get us prepared for next year's winter, and then we'll have 600 tons available through the course of the winter afterwards. Hopefully, we don't have to use it all as we did this year. Second item being the authorization of the city manager to purchase an international dump truck, dump body, snow plow, and salt spreader. This is for the Public Works Department, and it was an item that we had discussed a few weeks ago during the budget hearings, replacing a 1997 vehicle. The next one is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase a police vehicle for the K-9 Division. Again, another item we had discussed during the budget hearings, and they've authorized the okay for that during the, or at least put the budgeting for that in our 2014 budget. A resolution aligned the city of Campbell to apply for federal congestion mitigation air quality funds, programmed through Eastgate Regional Council Governments, for the safety upgrade of the North Broad Street, excuse me, project phase three. And this, we approved a resolution back in November for the exact same project, the same funding. However, CMAC, this congestion management fund, received additional funding this year. It's a better shoe for the project. It's the same percentage split, 80% grant, 20% local, and they feel it's a better shoe to submit the project, so we're basically just changing the funding source for the same project. And we look to go after Ohio Public Works Commission for the 20% when that time arises in the fall. And lastly, is a motion endorsing the month of May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. One other comment, just a reminder, the chamber has the annual Good Morning Camp Hill meeting this coming Friday at 7:30, and that's over at the Joyce Brooks Center over at Mahone County Joint Technical School. Hope to see you all be there.
Very good.
Joe, the sodium chloride, we're buying 500 ton now, and obviously, we're at a price, a negotiated price, but the 600 ton that we would deal with purchase, is that a set price as well, or?
Right, they're going to be getting, receiving two separate bid prices, one for the summer and one for the fall. In the contract this year, they've stipulated that they're only guaranteeing delivery in the summer, and like what happened this year, we still have, I believe, 70 tons that we've ordered back in January or February that we haven't received yet because of the backlog that they received during this winter. They put that in the contract next winter that if we have a similar type situation, they're not guaranteeing that we'll get all that we ask for in the second part of the contract, when we ask for it.
Got you.
Yes, Mr.?
What is, what's the overage that we could buy on that 500 ton bid, the summer bid?
Yeah, the summer bid is 100%. That's, we're committing, we're committing to the 500. On the fall bid, there's an 80, 110.
Okay, so the summer bid, we would not have the option of buying anything more than just the 500 tons, then?
Right, according to this contract.
Okay.
Again, our intent is to fill our bins so we wouldn't be able to purchase anything additional. Hopefully, we don't have snow before October.
Well, when you and I were talking about that, the one thing that stayed in my mind after I left the meeting was the fact that, you know, would we, did we want to buy something additional? And if we did that, we'd have to store it someplace else, like at Red Gate when we did that. So then the question is, what's the balancing act there? But again, you don't know what the price is either, so.
That's it? Mr. Waino, of course, shut it.
Yeah, I've written a couple of opinion letters recently. If you haven't received them, you probably will. Two were on income tax issues. First, relative to the statute of limitations for the municipal enforcement of the payment of those taxes, which is three years, which mirrors the revised code requirement. Also, the citation authority for our income tax administrator when she's conducting inquiries and investigations, and what the, what her ability or the finance director's ability to issue citations is in that regard, and we clarify all that. I have provided the city manager and zoning inspector with a proposed demolition ordinance modification, so you'll probably be seeing that, I would think, at the next meeting. I've also provided Joe with a, an opinion letter relative to your options as a municipality relative to annexation, and what those options are. Obviously, there's annexation, do nothing, annexation agreements, joint economic development districts, joint economic development zones. So I've provided that opinion to Joe, so that you could familiarize yourself with those options. And then lastly, in the Todd case, which we had, have been dealing with for a number of years, we won that at the Court of Appeals, Seventh District Court of Appeals, and their appeal time has now lapsed, so there will be no appeal to the Supreme Court in that. So I think we can close the book on that case.
Is everybody on council aware of what the Todd case is?
I was just going to kind of give a little background. Some years ago, it was a public records case. Some years ago, there was a ruling by the Supreme Court granting damages to an individual who had requested public records and had, which had not been provided. And I believe it was $1,000 on record. It was a significant amount. So a couple of people around the state got the brilliant idea that they were going to request records that just had to be unavailable for municipalities. Once they figured out that it could be a cash cow, they started making some crazy requests. This request that the city of Camp Hill got was for the real-to-real tapes that the police department used to use, that were erased every 24 hours. The erasure of which was a violation of the Ohio Public Records Law, way before anybody was aware of that, 70s and 80s. Those records did not exist. The cities could not, the city simply could not produce those records, and those records had probably been destroyed in the 80s or 90s in violation of the public records law, but who knew that then? So they make that request, which is just, it was kind of a bogus lawsuit, to be honest with you. But it had merit, and it sustained some quick dismissal notions, but the city was able to win on summary judgment motion at the court of common pleas level. And what was really telling was the requister did not even have a machine to play the real-to-real tapes. So clearly, this was a muddy draft. Won at the Seventh District Court of Appeals, and then they failed to appeal to the Supreme Court. So that case is now behind us. But at one time, you know, when I was writing audit opinion letters for the city during those years, you know, I was contemplating significant damages potentially that could arise from this case. We did retain outside counsel to assist us in that case, as I was a witness to the initial public records requests and could not serve then as, you know, lead litigator. And it was wonderful working with that law firm, Litan Nebraska. They did a great job, you know, we helped them where we could, and just couldn't be any more pleased with the result on that case. It's just, I'll say that.
Yeah, good. Some things work out.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Under Repetitive, of course, as bizarre as people for council, may I ask you to step forward to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record, and keep your comments brief. First name is Mr. Bob Makler.
Good evening. I have a number of issues to speak on tonight, and I reside at 81-1 Montgomery Lane. Actually, I'm here more as a representative from the Parks Board. Wanted to get council and so forth up to date on a few upcoming activities. The Tree City Awards Ceremony is going to be in Cambridge, Ohio, on the 22nd of this month. We will be receiving our 34th year, I believe, award at that. The finance director has, or will be by the end of this week, sending in our reservations for that, for two. I asked the mayor, he was unable at that date to make it, and I asked Nancy, and something has come up there, so talk to JT, he's got to figure about, you know, whether he can do it or not. But I wanted at least to let you know that 22nd, we will be receiving our award for Tree City. Arbor Day celebration this year. Wanted to give you a little heads up. It's in May, and it's going to be at Hilltop Elementary. I spoke with Mr. Jordan and Superintendent Jordan and Principal Maroni. We'd originally had it at one day that was going to work for them, then Mr. Maroni called me, and we got it changed to May 15th at 9:30 a.m. Of course, all council members are mentioned. I will bring this up in May, too, at one of the meetings, to remind everyone. And we have yet to set up, when I say we, Marketti, the board chairman and whatnot, to set up a meeting with Mr. Maroni to establish where and so forth the tree goes, but he's in the process of establishing some programs he'd like to have the elementary school do along with this. So I wanted to let you know about that. Also, I had the occasion on 20th of March, on Thursday, to attend an educational seminar on ADA standards for accessible design of playgrounds. This was over in Akron, and free of charge, and so I went over. I took some notes, I'm not going to go through all the details of it, but my general opinion from it is that we are in dire straits as far as meeting any ADA standards, and whether we have to or not is a question. Because there's things like when a playground is changed, like if there's a new ground cover, that's enough of a change to start enforcing or having to meet the ADA requirements. If there's a major change of equipment on the playground, from a slide to a swing, whatever, that can force you into starting to comply. I have established with David Williams of David Williams and Associates to come over, we have a tentative date of Thursday, April 17th, to do a review. I spoke with Joe and also JT, and I haven't had a chance yet to talk with Marketti because it was just before I came here, I got the email about the date. To do a review of our existing playgrounds, where they lack ADA accessibility and so forth, and from this, I hope to develop a plan, because that was indicated in the seminar, is that if you don't have compliance, you must at least have a plan in place. And there was a little bit in there that I wasn't quite sure if they had, if you had multiple playgrounds, whether one needed to be and you had a plan for the other, so some of that clarification I'm looking for. And they also have lines or leads on grants to perform some of this, and especially with the ADA requirements, these may be more beneficial. I know Mr. Waino has been looking at trying to obtain or what grants might be available for upgrading the playgrounds, and ADA requirements adding to that may be enough to help us there. That was all I had this evening. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Makiya?
Good evening. I'm Frank Makiya, reside at 220.20. This is kind of a new place to have a podium, the people behind me.
Mr. Tisch's record, I moved it because he can see the camera, can get you on camera, so why didn't I?
Okay. We also could have kept it there, he could have moved it over there, but anyway, that's not our good point.
You always would get your better side, Jeffy.
Yeah, the backside is my better side. All right, just a few comments. I keep it short, Steve, but I don't guarantee it. Yesterday, there were people throwing phone books on the driveways on Brook Park and on my street, and I did report that to the police, and apparently, it ceased. I did happen to speak with people doing it, and I mentioned to them that it is, there is an ordinance against that, and they thanked me for telling them. So apparently, they stopped doing that. Correction to last week's minutes, it was mentioned that the agenda, the website was, the meeting was on the website, and it was not, but it is this week, it has to step in the right direction, so hopefully, we can keep that up. And for the record, I'd like to read a little article that I had published in the town crier, so it goes into our minutes. After a long struggle, Camp Hill City Council has finally agreed to routinely put the meeting agenda on the website prior to the meeting. In addition, the verbatim minute meetings will be posted. However, the minutes will be posted only after approved in the next meeting, which is usually two weeks later. They could choose to post a draft, which is available in a few days after the meeting. In attending the meetings for several years, I have never seen the transcribed minutes changed. They're always approved as submitted. Why not submit them as drafts? They would be more timely. However, council has made little effort to make this information generally known to the residents. Why the reluctance to do so? I have offered suggestions, no results, so I will take the liberty to do it myself. You may find these at the Camp Hill website, www.cii.camphill.ohio.us. Hashtag. Next on the left, click on a tag, Public Notices. Scroll down to the Agenda or Minutes portions. There is also a great deal of other information about the city government on the website. In addition, an organization known as Western Reserve News frequently videotapes the whole meeting. This can be found at www.westernreservenews.com. At the top of the page, click on News Videos, scroll down to find Camp Hill City Council. The town crier and vindicator will occasionally cover the meetings and write up a synopsis of the meeting. Full coverage is best found on the Camp Hill website. I will also encourage council to post meeting minutes of the boards and commissions for all to see. This information should be available for all residents on the website. Overall, the website works, overall, the website works, but could use some polishing to make access a little easier. Residents, this is the opportunity for you to be better informed about your city is available for you to see. And I have a quote by Teddy Rosso, "The government is us, we are the government, you and I." I would hope that you will consider getting the minutes of the board and commissions up on the website. We've got the website there, we've got the minutes, we've got the agenda. Let's post what the boards and commissions are doing. Also, my usual appeal to council is to have two readings of the agenda items, and I think that would be appropriate. And one last thing, item D, which we've agreed to postpone, that $1.2 million expenditure. For me personally, I have a little aversion to spending $1.2 million. You know, our city budget's only nine-plus million, so I'm a little, sort of reluctant to do that without good, careful consideration and full justification to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I just made a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Frank, I just want to make a couple of comments. You know, I read your article after a long struggle. I don't think it was a long struggle at all. You asked us to put them on, we put them on. I even recommended it. So I don't know how you get a long struggle out of that, but maybe this is.
May I reply to your?
Absolutely.
It goes back several years, I've made those comments over several years. This wasn't the first time. Well, if you go back and review the minutes the last couple of years, you'll see that public occasionally.
As far as I've been on this board, that was the first, and it was done almost immediately. Yeah, second of all, the minutes are recorded with the recorder, so when they transcribe them, they're exact. That's why we don't usually have corrections. So, to answer that question, and then, we have, what, six citizens here tonight, three reporters. I will, I would ask Joe, can we find if we did put the, how many people actually go and read the minutes? Is there a counter that we can put on the website? Because I'll tell you, I bet you in a month, not three people, maybe you would go on three times, this proved me, but I would say that the citizens really don't care. These are the same people here, day in and day out, meeting after meeting. That's my comments.
I have a comment, Frank. We are not talking about borrowing $1.2, $1,240,000. We have some existing debt. We're talking about borrowing probably one-third of that amount, okay? And the numbers behind this logic is that two-thirds of the debt would inherit or get a better interest rate by, to the tune of about half a percent, which is pretty significant. So, don't think we're going out to just borrow 12 nineties of this money. We're already committed to a better part of $750,000.
I owe you a cup of coffee.
I'll take it, too. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. Under All Notes, there is none. Our new business, item A. As provisioned in section 4.05 of the charter of city of Campbell, I move that dispense with the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorize adoption by adoption of same funds for a screen. Another second?
Second.
Mr. Morbe? Discussion? Every then and per se, call and roll.
Mr. Braggish?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
And as provisioned in section 4.05 of the charter of city of Campbell, I move that council dispense with the requirement. to council disperse with the requirement of full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized by its title only. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Mr. Tish. Okay. The clerkies call a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Thank you. What about Mr. Morbe?
Mr. ...
We're forgetting Johnny. I forgot, I forgot the man. We haven't got him.
I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance requesting participation in purchase contracts of the state for sodium chloride. I would move for passage.
Okay, do I have a second? Second. I will call for the mayor that time. Okay, Mayor, any discussion?
None.
Clerkies call a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
And number is?
2014-15.
Thank you very much. Item B, as to the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorized adoption by same basis first read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dragich, discussion? There be none, the clerkies call a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Okay, and as provisioned in Section 4.05, the charter to the city of Canfield, I move to council disperse with the requirement of full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized by its title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morbe, there. Okay, discussion? Okay, the clerkies call a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Dragich.
Yes, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase an international dump truck, dump body, snowplow, and salt spreader.
Passage, okay. Move for passage. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Mr. Tish, discussion? Clerkies call a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
And number is?
2014-16.
Thank you very much. Item C, as provisioned in Section 4.05, the charter to the city of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorized adoption by same basis first read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morbe, discussion? There be none, the clerkies call a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And as provisioned in Section 4.05, the charter to the city of Canfield, I move to council disperse with the requirement of full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized by its title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morbe, there. Discussion? There be none, the clerkies call a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Morbe.
Mr. Chairman, I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase a police vehicle for the K-9 Division, and I move for passage.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor, I got you this time. Okay. Any discussion? The clerkies call a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
And the number is?
2014-17.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I could, Mr. Marino, could you explain the way those purchases, the last two purchases were handled through state purchasing and how that works, just so everybody's aware of that?
Yeah, each year, the state of Ohio, and we participate in this program with the state, you know, these cities have the ability to buy into it or not, but they go out for different bids for, for example, the roads, the various equipment, office equipment, vehicles, vehicle equipment. And if you purchase through that program, there's no bidding involved, because that's the lowest price you're going to get in the state. You also have the ability to take that price to other dealerships in the area or anywhere in the state and see if they'll beat that price, and again, you don't have to go through the bidding process. And we've, in the case of the truck, we are purchasing it through the state purchase program. The CERNY Motors has a, is a vendor on that program, buying it at the state purchase price, whereas the second vehicle, the police vehicle, we're purchasing that under the state purchase price. We had gone to two different, both Ford and Chrysler, and Chrysler underbid by several thousand dollars on that, so we were, cities actually recouping a savings versus buying it direct at the state purchase price.
Thank you.
Okay, the new Item D, as provisioned in Section 4.05, the charter to the city of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of the proposed resolution. That is correct, yes. And authorized adoption by same basis first read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dragich, discussion? There be none, the clerkies call a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Okay, and as provisioned in Section 4.05, the charter to the city of Canfield, I move to council disperse with the requirement of full reading of the proposed resolution and authorized by its title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morbe. Discussion? Clerkies call a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Cozar.
I have a resolution allowing the city of Canfield to apply for federal congestion mitigation air quality, C-M-A-Q, funds programmed by the Eastgate Regional Council of Governments, Eastgate, for the safety upgrade of North Broad Street, Project Phase 3. I move for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tish.
Joe, I have a question.
Discussion, go ahead.
Yeah, so this C-M-A-Q, then, does that supersede the resolution for the STF?
Yes.
Okay, so do we have both of them available to us then, or we move from the STF to this one?
We don't really need to negate the resolution.
Okay, but I mean, we don't have an option of applying for both of them.
No. We would just, we're discarding, and this would accompany the application that we've previously submitted.
Got you.
But it would be for the CMAC.
And we don't, we don't have to negate that other?
No.
Okay.
That's Eastgate's doing the programming for us.
Got you.
Okay. Any more discussion?
One other comment, and I think Mr. Marino alluded to this, is this is an 80/20 funding type circumstance, but would also allow us to apply for our 20% match through the High Public Works Commission at a later time. So, this may be 100% grant project as opposed to 80/20.
Okay. Okay, clerkies call a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
And the number is?
2014-7.
Thank you. Okay, new Item D is a motion, as provisioned in Section 4.05, the charter to the city of Canfield, I move to council disperse with the requirement of full reading of the proposed motion and authorized by its title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morbe. Discussion? There be none, the clerkies call a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Dragich. Motion.
Motion.
I'll take the motion.
Okay.
I thought it was yours, too. A motion endorsing the month of May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. For passage, please.
Second.
Second, Mr. Tish. Any discussion? Clerkies call a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be good. The number, please.
Can I change those numbers? The resolution was eight, and the motion is eight, seven, I'm sorry, seven. Seven.
Seven for this one and eight for the previous.
The resolution is eight.
The resolution is eight, okay. Check out, sorry, that was your reading, sir, about that. All right.
We figured it out.
Okay, that's it for legislation. Under council's comments this evening, Mr. Tish.
My only comment for this evening is I would like to urge council to maybe have a special managers' meeting in some, sometime before our next meeting, to have some further discussion with regard to the borrowing and overall, maybe some general discussions about our budget that has been approved.
What do you recommend, Mr. Tish?
I think, subject to majority of council. I don't have a regular debate.
Should we make it right now? You want to make it right now? Can you do it right now, you can? I'd love to. Let's do it right now, might as well. Next meeting would be, what, April 16th? What's your, what's your feeling, folks?
First of all, narrow it down. Do you want it evening?
Well, I would imagine you want to make it, make it in the evening.
An evening?
Evening, if that's best for you guys.
Not those, but it's not working.
Yeah, but we'll make it happen. Don, you want to do morning? We do morning?
I'll do morning.
Who do morning?
I can do morning.
You guys retired. You retired, too, Josh, or something.
Yeah, right.
Whatever sounds good to you guys.
Mr. President, Tuesday mornings is a managers' meeting at 8:00. Why don't we do, follow that, what, say at 9:00?
That sounds good, very.
Tuesday morning?
The 8th?
Tuesday morning, the 8th.
When is the 8th?
Tuesday, the 8th.